Well, good evening and welcome to the Fort Smith City Board of Directors meeting. This is August the 5th. I mean, this year is really flying by quickly. Keep in mind, these meetings are being televised live for the benefit of our residents who can't be with us in person. So with that, I'm going to ask Director Neil Martin if he would do invocation. And Director Settle, would you lead us in pledge? Okay, thank you.
Right, pray with me, please. Father, thank you for this opportunity tonight. Thank you for bringing us here. The opportunity to do the business of the city. And Lord, I just pray for wisdom upon the six of us up here. I pray that you'd give us understanding, clarity to the decisions that we make. Lord, I pray that you be with those in the audience and those coming to speak. I pray that you give them wisdom and the words to speak to this board. And Father, we once again ask for blessing on the city of Fort Smith. We pray for all those that are serving our city, our police, our fire, all those that are working on behalf of the city. Lord, we pray for protection for them. We pray for your hand on them. And Lord, we just pray that tonight we move our city forward. We pray that your hand is on us. And we ask all these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And again, thanks for all of you for being with us in person. At this time, we're going to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Directors Rego.
Here.
Good.
Here.
Kemp.
Here.
George Gittsavas.
Here.
Christina Gittsavas. Settle.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, I'll ask if there's any member of the board that may have an item of business not already on the agenda. Okay, seeing none. At this time, we'll ask for approval of the July 22 regular meeting.
Summude. Second.
Okay, thank you all in favor.
Aye.
Okay, thank you much. This time, we'll go to the agenda, the first item. Mr. Demon.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item this evening is an ordinance rezoning property at 301 Southeast Street to a planned zoning district. Deputy City Administrator Maggie Rice will speak to this item.
The Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider rezoning property located at 301 Southeast Street from industrial light and industrial moderate to a planned zoning district. The proposed rezoning to a planned zoning district permits the homeless shelter indoor expansion, land use by right, and requires conditional use approval from the Planning Commission for the homeless shelter exterior modifications, land use. A neighborhood meeting was held on June 25th. There were no neighboring property owners in attendance. At the Planning Commission meeting, Mr. Casey Wilson was present to represent these applications. There were none present to speak in favor or opposition. The Planning Commission voted eight in favor with zero opposed to recommend the zoning map be amended.
Okay, thank you, Maggie. Madam Clerk, are there any citizens' comments on this particular item?
We only have Casey Wilson.
Okay, thanks for being here, Casey. At this time, we will entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance with suspension of the rules.
Summude.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance rezoning identified property and amending the zoning map, and this is for property located at 301 Southeast Street.
Okay, at this time, we will go to directors' comments. And if you have any questions or concerns, Casey's here to assist us with that. Director Neil Martin, you're recognized.
So Maggie, we're creating two new land uses and one rezoning. Is that correct? So it's PZD on the rezoning. What is, what's the two land uses? That didn't, that seemed new to me. Could you explain that?
Sure. So a PZD is a customizable zoning district. And in order to meet the needs for Hope Campus, we created two new land uses, a homeless shelter indoor expansions and a homeless shelter exterior modifications. And so anything on the outside of the structure, the grounds, or any sort of addition would require conditional use approval or site plan approval through the Planning Commission, which is a public hearing process. But any sort of renovation or expansion in the warehouse space that they currently have that is vacant onsite inside would be permitted by right.
So if they were to want to expand inside today, what would happen?
It would require conditional use approval through the Planning Commission.
So they'd have to go through the Planning Commission?
It would require a public hearing, yes, sir.
So this just allows them to do whatever they would like to do inside without coming back to the Planning Commission?
Yes, sir.
Are they the only entity in these two new land uses?
This PZD, yes. This PZD is the only zoning district in Fort Smith that has these two separate homeless shelter land uses.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Director Kemp.
Thank you, Mayor. Casey, can you just confirm, I think the big thing that this will do for Hope Campus is to give you guys an ability in pursuit of grants to support your organization. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So whenever you apply for grants, you know, they can be complex in nature. And it's a lot of work that has to be put forth for a grant. So it isn't a coordinate, so if we are awarded a grant, we don't get awarded it and then get denied whatever we're trying to do on the inside and went through all that work.
Yeah, I agree. I think this is a great move forward for us in how we care for the unhoused population and can also set Hope Campus up to do their due diligence. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Directors Rego.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
George Gittsavas.
Yes.
Settle.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
It's approved, six in favor and zero opposed.
This time, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the emergency clause.
Summude.
Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Directors Good.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
George Gittsavas.
Yes.
Settle.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Rego.
Yes.
Motion passes, six in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you. Let's go to item two.
Items two and three relate to the donation of city-owned personal property to the Riverview Hope Campus. Ms. Rice will speak to this item.
Yes, thank you. Representatives of the Riverview Hope Campus requested to relocate the Hope Park Pavilion to Hope Campus at 301 Southeast Street. The enclosed ordinance allows for the pavilion to be donated to Hope Campus, and the resolution allows waiving all building permit and inspection fees associated with the relocation. Included in the packet is a letter from Mr. Wilson, the Executive Director of Hope Campus, detailing the need as well as requesting the waiver of fees.
Okay, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, are there any citizens' comments?
Mr. Casey Wilson.
Okay. Would you like to make some comments, Casey?
Any questions?
Okay, thank you. At this time, we entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Summude.
Second.
Thank you.
With suspension of the rules.
And Mayor, just for point of clarification, are we talking about doing both two and three together?
Uh, no.
Okay.
We're going to take them separate.
With suspension of the rules.
Oh, sorry. Not required.
Not required. Not required. Not on my sheet.
So we're done two and three.
Okay, so we need a motion to adopt the ordinance, and we got that from Director Kemp and a second from Director George Gittsavas. This time, are there any comments? Director Neil Martin, you're recognized.
So I just had a little clarification. I see what you mentioned here in your memo to us, shade and way to stay out of inclement weather. Is the intent to create an area where people camp and sleep on this, in this, on this covered area? Or is it just for it's hot, gets them out of the sun, it's raining, gets them out of the rain? For a period of, I guess, for a short period of time?
Yeah, so I think originally, whenever Chris and I think it was Mr. Gefkin had talked about it, that was the plan. But as it's evolved, and I've talked more to the community and those of y'all involved, it sounds to me, to me, it'd be more like to provide shelter from the sun. Like during the summer times, the sun beats down on individuals walking throughout our area. And, you know, they'll be in psychosis and things, and the sun will be beating down on their skin. And I just want to provide shelter and shade.
Okay, so we're not, we're not talking about creating an outdoor camping area? Okay. And my assumption is that it's not a place to store items either. So like I go, I can store my gear here? Or is it just I'm getting out of the, out of the sun, I've got all my stuff with me, I'm not leaving it overnight, I'm not leaving it there. Everything's within my possession and...
So, you know, that's something that we buy day in and day out. And we hope to one day have somewhere that the unsheltered can have somewhere to put their belongings, like in our warehouse space, but not in the outdoor space.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Director Kemp.
Thank you. Mayor, I would say to our board, we have the due diligence still to figure out, are we going to look at Grants Pass, Oregon? Are we going to look at a revision of the ordinance that I was proposing? Are we going to do a combination of the two? But if we are going to restrict an individual that's out on the sidewalk, say on Garrison Avenue, what we do need is an alternative to say, you can't be here, but here is where services are and this is where you can go. And if they are not choosing that pathway, then they can pursue shelter elsewhere or however they're going to take care of themselves. But I want us to offer an alternative, in my position, other than jail and littering the court, court cost for these individuals, and just lagging up the court structure and schedule as it is. So this also has been a, one of the things that needs to be consolidated is the public feeding towards the unhoused. And I think this allows this to be consolidated around the Hope Campus, which was the intent when the community built the Hope Campus, was consolidating services for those that are in disfortunate situations. And so I think this is all a good move. It's a good foundation for us. And then whether this board wants to put together an ordinance to address this or if we're going to see how time spans out and how organizations support this community and those that are in disfortunate positions, then perhaps we don't need the ordinance. But I think this is a good move to take this pavilion and put it in a better location where we've already consolidated services. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Director Settle.
Thank you. Jeff, if we do donate this pavilion, what happens to Hope Park? Does that become a piece of property that the city owns that we could put up for sale?
That's possible, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
How much acreage is there?
I don't remember specifically. I think it's about half an acre.
Okay.
On the riverfront?
It's on...
I mean, but it's close to Riverfront Drive.
Close to the riverfront.
It's on the...
East side.
East side of the riverfront, yeah. Good, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? This time, Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the roll.
Directors Kemp.
Yes.
George Gittsavas.
Yes.
Settle.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Rego.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
It's approved, six in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you. And this is progress that we're making. Just the other day, they dedicated a new property that's going to house up to six families, six families, which is greatly needed at the Miller Cottage. So we are making progress in the area of homelessness. So again, thank you very much. This time, we'll go to item three.
Item three is a resolution waiving permit fees for the pavilion we just mentioned.
Okay. Are there any citizens' comments on that item?
Mr. Casey Wilson.
Okay. If not, we'll go, he's here to answer questions. This time, we entertain a motion to adopt a resolution.
Summude.
Second.
Thank you. Any board comments on this item?
Mayor, is that one question?
Yes, Director Settle.
Maggie, how much of the sphere are we waving? Dollar-wise, how much does it come to?
I don't have a total for you because we don't have a current estimate on relocation of the pavilion. It's not going to be a huge amount, but I don't have a total for you because we don't have a current estimate.
Five thousand, ten thousand?
Oh, no. I would say in the hundred dollars range, five hundred dollars range.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If there are no further questions from the board, please call the roll.
Directors George Gittsavas.
Mm-hmm. Yes, yes, yes.
Settle.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Rego.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
It's approved, six in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you. Item number four.
Item four is an ordinance rezoning property in the 10,000 block of Preston Court. Ms. Rice?
Yes, on July 8, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider rezoning property located at 10-405, 10-409, 10-415, 10-423, and 10-427 Preston Court for residential, single-family high density to residential, single-family duplex, high density. The proposed rezoning facilitates the construction of six duplexes on lots 14 through 19 of the Stone Ridge subdivision. A neighborhood meeting was held on June 25th. There were no neighboring property owners in attendance. At the Planning Commission meeting, Ms. Nicole Swanson was present to represent the application. There were none present to speak in favor or opposition of the item. The Planning Commission voted seven in favor with zero opposed and one abstention to recommend the zoning map be amended.
Okay, thank you much. Are there any citizens' comments, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have Nicole Swanson to answer questions, but we also have Andy Postrick.
Andy, you're recognized.
Hi, thank you, everybody. Thank you. My name's Andy Postrick. I love living in Fort Smith because of the large diversity of housing options. I'm a neighboring landowner for this project, and I'm in favor. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Andy. Any other comments? Would you like to make some comments, Mayor?
Just here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you for being here. This time, we entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance with suspension of the rules.
Summude, suspension of the rules.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance rezoning identified property and amending the zoning map, and this is for properties located at 10,405, 10,409, 10,415, 10,419, 10,423, and 10,427 Preston Court.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we entertain comments from the board. Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Director Settle.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Rego.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
George Gittsavas.
Yes.
It's approved, six in favor and zero opposed.
We need a motion to adopt the emergency clause.
Summude.
Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
I did, so.
Okay. Directors Martin.
Yes.
Rego. Good.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
George Gittsavas.
Yes.
Settle.
Yes.
Motion passes, six in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you. Item five.
Item five is an ordinance rezoning property at 4900 Spradling Avenue. Ms. Rice?
Yes, on July 8, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider the subject master land use plan amendment and rezoning applications. The property is located on the southeast corner of Spradling Avenue and North 49th Street. Approval allows for an event center to operate from the former church building as well as the other land uses listed within the land use chart. Two neighborhood meetings were held on April the 17th and on June 25th. A total of five neighboring property owners attended both meetings in support of the request. At the Planning Commission meeting, Mr. and Mrs. Bonilla were present to represent these applications. There were none present to speak in favor or opposition. The Planning Commission voted eight in favor with zero opposed to recommend the zoning map be amended.
Okay, thank you. Are there any public comments, Madam Clerk?
We only have Dilbert and, what was the name again? Bonillas and Dana Rosa to answer questions.
Okay, thank you. This time, we entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance with suspension of the rules.
Summude, with suspension of the rules.
Second.
Thank you. Please read the ordinance.
An ordinance amending the master land use plan map and rezoning identified property and amending the zoning map for property located at 4900 Spradling Avenue.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the board? Director Settle, you're recognized. I'm sorry, Director Rego.
Thank you, Director Settle. Thank you all for your desire to, you know, invest in our community and to activate this vacant facility into an event center. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the board? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Directors Rego.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
George Gittsavas.
Yes.
Settle.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
It's approved, six in favor and zero opposed.
Need a motion to adopt the emergency clause.
Summude.
Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Directors Good.
Yep.
Kemp.
Yes.
George Gittsavas.
Yes.
Settle.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Rego.
Yes.
Motion passes, six in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you for being here. Thank you. We'll go to item number six.
Item six is an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance to remove provisions related to extraterritorial jurisdiction in order to comply with recent changes in state law. Ms. Rice?
Yes, on July 8, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider amendments bringing Fort Smith's zoning code in compliance with Act 314. On March 13, the state legislature adopted Act 314 abolishing extraterritorial jurisdictions in Arkansas. The act went into effect today. The Planning Commission voted eight in favor with zero opposed to recommend the UDO be amended.
Okay, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, are there any citizens' comments on this item?
None indicating.
This time, we entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance with suspension of the rules.
Summude.
Second.
Thank you. Please read the ordinance.
An ordinance amending the 2019 Unified Development Ordinance of the city of Fort Smith.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the board? Okay, thank you. Please call the roll.
Directors Kemp.
Yes.
George Gittsavas.
Yes.
Settle.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Rego.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
It's approved, six in favor and zero opposed.
We need a motion to adopt the emergency clause.
Summude.
Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Directors George Gittsavas.
Yes.
Settle.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Rego. Good.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Motion passes, six in favor and zero opposed.
Item seven.
This item is an ordinance to repeal parking meter fees and facilitate the removal of parking meters from downtown Fort Smith as discussed at the July 15 study session. At this point in time, the board has waived parking meter fees in the downtown area for nearly two years, and the overall response from property owners, business owners, and downtown patrons has been positive. There has been no discernible change as to how or where parking happens downtown during the business day hours, and there is typically always parking available. This ordinance does provide for signage to regulate parking around the old county courthouse as requested by the Sebastian County judge due to limited parking around the building, and the county has agreed to provide any needed enforcement.
Okay, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, are there any citizens' comments on this item?
None indicating.
Okay, we need a motion to adopt the ordinance with suspension of the rules.
Summude.
Second.
Thank you. Please read the ordinance.
An ordinance repealing regulation of metered parking, providing for the removal of parking meters and adopting parking regulations for the area around Sebastian County Courthouse.
Okay, thank you very much. Any board member comments? Director Rego.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to thank my colleagues on the board. You know, this was a journey I encouraged us to go on coming up on two years ago. And I know that there was questions, but it was always an honest process that everybody brought to the table to assess, you know, real-world outcomes from this. And just, you know, thank you to everyone for looking into the future and seeing this possibility. I think this is a, I mean, it's a big deal. And it's a big change to how business is done downtown. I just appreciate the work we've all put in on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Director Settle.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Rego.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
George Gittsavas.
Yes.
It's approved, six in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you. At this time, we will go to our consent agenda. Mr. Demon, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. There are three items on this evening's consent agenda. We have a resolution authorizing purchase of cybersecurity technology, a resolution authorizing purchase of physical access control system components for 3900 Kelly Highway, and a resolution approving an agreed order to resolve a civil action.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, Madam Clerk, are there any citizens' comments on any of these?
We have two for item 8C.
8C, okay. We can hear from them.
Okay, the first is Marilyn Moore.
Okay, Ms. Moore, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, board. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I think it was very important to let you know why I sent in my FOIA request and the basis of that and why it was so important. And then later, my disappointment in the city of Fort Smith's response. In November, the governor sent her team members plus the Board of Corrections, Department of Corrections, and they told a gym full of people that a 3,000-bed mega-prison was a done deal in our community. And from that moment, citizens, ordinary citizens such as myself, we set out on a mission to dig through public records. And what we found was inconsistencies, mistruths, emails between government officials making fun of the people of Franklin County. And why this is important is regardless of what your position is on the prison. Not one person likes to be blindsided by their state or their government officials. And I'd ask you to ask yourself, if that happened to the city of Fort Smith and they come in and said, guys, ladies, this is a done deal. Fort Smith's getting a 3,000-bed prison. How would you feel if that was forced on you? And then if you knew one of the components was very important in getting water from Fort Smith, would not you want honest answers from those people that was in charge of that? So what I would ask is for you guys to think about that. I'd ask you to approve the mutual agreement. Let's move forward and in the future, try to do better. Thank you.
Thank Ms. Moore for being here. Thank you.
And next, we have Crystal Caddelli.
Thank you for the time tonight. I just want to kind of echo, you know, what the lawsuit is about. And it's about honesty and transparency. And it seems like the city just really has a problem with that. You know, I personally don't know Mr. Demon. He's always very friendly and, you know, shows up very professionally, which is appreciated. But unfortunately, a likable demeanor doesn't get the job done. And so, you know, the city for the past year has occurred several very embarrassing situations from our city leadership. And I think it, you know, I think this board needs to really pay attention. And I think that they really need to think through, you know, liking someone versus if they're right for the position. And I think that we really need to focus on, you know, being transparent and growing good, strong leadership. If you have a leader that's dishonest, then, you know, their employees underneath them, what kind of example does that leave them? That makes them seem like, well, this is the way that the city's ran. We can be as dishonest as our leadership is. And then it creates a culture of, you know, your citizens not believing in you. And I just, I really do plead with this board to really be thoughtful and think through these... these things. And although you have a person that has done some really great things for the city, it can't overshadow all the bad things. So, thank you very much. That's all.
That's it, okay. Okay. At this time, we will entertain a motion to adopt all consent agenda items.
So moved. Second.
Okay. This time we entertain comments from the board on any of the items.
Mayor, I'd like to talk about item C.
You recognize?
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, item A for me. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Hearing Ms., hearing Ms. Moore, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for your words. As an elected official, I can give my commentary at this point. I am opposed to this prison. One, I'm sorry that the Franklin County residents were treated that way. My family is the Langstons, who live in Cecil, Arkansas. My mom, my grandma was Evelyn Langston. She was a sweet woman who's gone to be with the Lord. And I don't think that they were treated fairly in this situation. And I would go on record that I am for prison reform. You know, we are loading our prisons up, and we're burdening a population that I think with drug court, mental health court, DWI court, there are options for us to continue to expand those services, and I hope that the state of Arkansas continues to do such maneuvers. Also, with that said, I too share and have voiced to city administration the handling of FOIA materials and how we have got to do better by this. We live in a day with AI and all kinds of capabilities, with searching files and servers and opportunities that I think need to be explored on how to do better at getting this information. I think one thing that the public hasn't been aware of, and I think it's because you, at some level, need to trust your elected officials, but this has been voiced to Mr. Dingman as the acting city administrator. He has taken action. He has done a great job of reassigning this task to staff who have the time and the ability to fulfill this. These, this case and the other cases, at the time, the workload was put on him as the acting city administrator. And I think that is an onus of us as the board of directors, and I want to apologize that you did not receive that. And I think through the process of speaking up and saying we need to designate a staff member who can handle this appropriately and timely has happened. And I want you to be aware of that in regards to that. All that said, I will be voting no on this agreed order because I've talked with legal team as well on this, and I've called Colby earlier today to have a conversation, and I just want to acknowledge, I think we did miss our deadline of FOIA in this case, but based on the information I reviewed, I do not believe the delay was driven by ill intent or any effort to conceal information. The emails that Dingman did provide from to the board about the meeting that occurred in April is all the information, and I will go on record saying that, because I was also in the meeting in attendance in March, where we went to the state to meet with RDOT and the Lieutenant Governor, and we were talking about a whole bunch of issues, not the prison. But we were planning to ask the governor, why have we not heard about prison water, and you're talking about building a prison? That conversation never got to occur. So the talking points that is being brought up in this case actually don't bring any substantial information, in my opinion, to the case of changing anything beyond the transparency of what the City of Fort Smith has provided. I have concerns about the process surrounding the case. The expedited hearing using a narrow FOIA exception placed the city under pressure and did not allow a reasonable window to prepare a full legal response. I believe a hearing should be set within seven to 10 days, but not conducted to allow time for transparency. Colby, just a question. The hearing that's even set for next week is still not allowing the city its 30 days to actually issue a formal response to this. Is that correct?
That's correct. The hearing is set before the city and Mr. Dingman's time to file a response under the rules of civil procedure.
If we were to go to trial and the hearing, through all of its transparency, conveyed that it was not of substantial information, is there fees that we, attorney fees that we would be subject to initiate?
The, one of the statutes under the Freedom of Information Act provides that a plaintiff who prevails in the lawsuit shall be awarded reasonable attorney's fees if that plaintiff, after the filing of the lawsuit, receives significant or material information related to the FOIA requested issue. And so here, I think there's a reasonable argument, a good argument to make, that the documents that were provided after the lawsuit were filed was not material or significant, because it provided no additional information than what was already given before the lawsuit was filed. So that's the component for a plaintiff. They have to show that they got information, got documents after the lawsuit was filed that is significant or material. I don't contend that's the case, but a judge may very well disagree. So that's the issue.
And then also, if, is there a precedence of concern towards you, your professional opinion about this exception for expedited hearings, sometimes putting municipal governments in the state of Arkansas under a strain to be able to do the prudence and due diligence of legal action?
Yes, sir. My opinion, there's a statute under the Freedom of Information Act provides that a plaintiff who brings a cause of action can petition, make an application to the court for a hearing, and the court, it says, shall, you know, set a hearing date within seven days of that application request by the plaintiff. Now, under the rules of civil procedure of Arkansas, a defendant, a civil defendant, once served with process, a summons and a copy of the complaint, has 30 days to answer a lawsuit, and that's a rule of civil procedure. I think there's good authority out there that the provision within FOIA that says that some indicate or some conclude you can get an expedited hearing, that runs afoul the separation of powers doctrine, in that it, the legislature has overstepped its bounds, or the argument would be the legislature has overstepped its bounds into the province of the judiciary and how the judiciary conducts its rules of practice and procedure. So there's an argument that that provision is unconstitutional. Again, and that has never been raised to the Supreme Court, the Arkansas Supreme Court, but that's what it would take to get the issue addressed.
So is it fair to say that this is a case that could be brought before the Arkansas Supreme Court to get a ruling upon that matter?
It could be if the hearing is held as scheduled within the city's deadline or timeframe to file an answer, and of course, the city would have to file a counterclaim for declarative relief, bringing up that issue, and you get a ruling from the lower court, and then from there, the parties could take an appeal.
Thank you, Colby. For me, this is as simple as spending north of $1,500 right now or waiting until next week, letting it be adjudicated in court, let a ruling be made, with the potential of not paying north of $1,500 in attorney fees. And personally, I just stand that we have done our due diligence to and are doing our due diligence to improve this. This is unexcusable as far as not giving documentation, and I've made that now public and private to all that need to hear it. And for me, I would be a no on this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Director Neil Martin?
Yeah, so all I would, all I would say, and I appreciate that, Director Kemp, the expectation is transparency. We have said that privately. I've said that privately to Jeff, and we say that publicly. That is the expectation.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, any questions?
We're going to go to Director George Gittsavas, and then we'll go to Mr. Ding-
Colby? I want to make sure I understand this, because I, for some reason, I never got this information. If we, if the board passes this tonight, then it's, we do the settlement and that's it, the 1,500 or whatever, correct?
If the board approves the agreed order, the lawsuit will be over. I'll sign it. We'll submit it to Mr. McCutcheon. I will submit it to the-
And he's not seeking any attorney's fees?
No, the order provides that the plaintiff will be entitled to $1,500 of attorney's fees, which she has incurred. Mr. McCutcheon's office has provided me, has provided me that documentation, as well as cost of 200 and something dollars. I can't remember. So yes, attorney's fees of $1,500 plus $200 plus cost.
But on the, but if we go to court, the judge could also may rule that the city was liable or whatever, and awarded a lot more money, correct?
Well, if you go to court and the court agrees with the plaintiff's theory, plaintiff will have incurred more attorney's fees. That is true, and the fees will be more than $1,500. Yes.
Okay. So your position is to accept this, deny it?
I think there's a good argument, like I said earlier, about the handling of the documents and were they significant or material to the information that was requested. There's obviously no guarantee in any litigation, so I, you know, I think it's a judgment call for this board. You know, I take my directives from this board as whether to continue to defend the lawsuit or settle it. So I just, it's, you know, I don't have an opinion whether it's a good position to settle it, but I think there's good arguments to contend otherwise to defeat or to counter a quest for attorney's fees if the city was not successful in the lawsuit.
Would the bearing, any bearing on the case if Ms. Moore, if Ms. Moore brings up past FOIA violations from the city, would that, could that be happen?
That wouldn't be relevant.
It won't be relevant?
Not in my opinion.
Why?
Because in this lawsuit, the court will be deciding, did the city violate the FOIA with respect to this issue? It doesn't matter, did the city violate it in 2022, 2023, earlier in 2025? Did you violate it in this instance with respect to this plaintiff?
But that, I mean, but that could show a pattern of misconduct, correct?
A pattern is not the standard. You know, plaintiff has to show, did you submit a request? Did you not get documents timely, or did you not get documents at all? The pattern of misconduct isn't, isn't relevant, and I would contend that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Who's next?
Okay, thank you. Director Good?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a comment. I want to thank Director Kemp for expounding on those facts. And I do agree with you that we, as the board, know that we expect transparency and honesty, and to me, that's not even in question. But just because of the low amount that we're dealing with and to get this behind me, I want to go ahead and be done with this.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Director Settle?
Thank you. Colby, earlier this year, the state legislators enacted Senate Bill 227, which ended up being Act 505. Is your analysis based on the new law that was passed by this House and Senate and signed by the governor this year?
No, my analysis is that act didn't change the statute I'm referring to.
So it did not, but there was a big, there was a big push by the state legislators to coalesce all the FOI laws into one bill, which meant it being Senate Bill 227, which was Act 505.
Oh, Act 505 made significant changes to the FOIA laws, but it didn't change the provision I'm referring to about the standard by which a successful plaintiff is awarded attorney's fees.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Director Rigo?
Just before we started to vote, Director Gittsavas, did you still have a question about eight A? You had mentioned something a little bit ago about eight A.
I did.
I should, why?
Who's here to talk about that?
Thank you, Director Rigo.
Steve Dimmett from the IT department is here to address this, Adam.
Steve, I just have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
What are we, we have cybersecurity now, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, why are there need for this system?
It's not a new system, sir.
It's what?
It's not a new system.
What is it?
It's a, the continuation of the current system.
For $600,000?
Yes, sir.
Is that right?
Three years' worth.
And how often is that paid?
It's over three years.
Three years?
Yes, sir.
$600,000?
Yes, sir.
For cybersecurity?
Yes, sir. It's important.
It's over three years. I know, but I mean.
I mean, the school board, school system's got hit, and they're still reeling from it. So, I mean, talk to those school teachers and what's going on at the school system. They got hit. They're still down at Southside High School, and they start school next week.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
What do y'all get your funding to pay for this?
General fund, sir.
You kind of the general fund, too?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. If there are no further questions, question for Director Neil Martin?
Yeah, since we have a question on C, I'd like to pull C out for a separate vote.
That's, we were going to do that. Thank you, thank you for the reminder. At this time, we will ask for a motion to adopt items A and B.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any further comments on those particular items? If not, please call the roll.
Directors Martin?
Yes.
Rigo?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
George Gittsavas?
Yes.
Settle?
Yes.
It's approved, six in favor and zero opposed.
This time we'll entertain a motion on item C on the consent agenda.
Motion to prove.
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
I'm sorry, who's seconded?
Rigo, Director Rigo.
Directors Rigo?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Kemp?
No.
George Gittsavas?
Yes.
Settle?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passes, five in favor and one opposed.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we will go to the officials forum. Nothing at this point, and we will go to Director Neil Martin first.
Yeah, so I think we, there was a notification that came out late today about the continued mandatory water conservation. I had it up here, just as a reminder for folks. We want to make sure that no lawn or turf watering, you know, those kind of commercial car washing, no, no, no commercial car washes, those kind of things. Oh, they are okay? That's not what this thing says. But I think, it says no filling or operation of swimming pools. What does that mean, operation of swimming pools?
Continuing the automated fill.
Automated fill. So that's, that's putting water into the, so public pools or private pools can be open just as long as they're not filling, filling pools, until this is lifted?
Correct.
Okay.
And if I might, go ahead.
Yeah, no, go ahead. Expand on it.
No, I might say that the repaired of the 24-inch, I made regular updates throughout the day yesterday, but I realized when somebody asked the question, that repair was completed last night at about 11:30, and so that pipe is repaired. However, it needs, it needs a couple of days for, to be disinfected, thank you. And when that happens, it'll start to fill then the loose water tank. And so when that tank is filled to an acceptable level, then that's when the phase-two water conservation can be lifted, and that likely will be this weekend or early next week.
Okay. But I just wanted to just remind folks to bear with this for a little bit longer.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And you can, I mean, there was some low-volume conversation going over there, but it's the prohibition on washing your motor vehicle, your trailer, your airplane, your boats, or your building exteriors is prohibited except at commercial car washes and licensed commercial vehicle dealerships. Thank you. I missed that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Director Settle, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I'd like to add to that is I saw a great workforce yesterday. I went out to the site and saw the street departments working with utilities departments hand in hand. Contractors came up from Dallas. I saw gentlemen down in the pipes, 20 feet deep, in a 24-inch pipe, welding a pipe together inside the pipe. You know, sometimes we look at all the negatives, but there was a lot of positive things going on. In the midst of crisis, departments were working together, working hard. Everybody was red hot, but they were still getting after it, and I was very, very proud of that team. It's great to see the utilities and street departments working together and everybody all together putting it together. Thanks.
Thank you for that comment. That's just an example of the kind of work that happens every day, day in, day out, with the people that deliver the services that the public expects. And so certainly, we tip our hats to that crew that worked 24/7 to make sure we didn't have a boil water or anything else that would have been a major disruption. So again, thanks to Lance and his crew and those guys that- So again, thanks to Lance and his crew and those guys that, that, all across the city that, that lent a hand to make that, to get that work done. It was not an easy project. It was a big project. And again, thanks to all of you. Director George Gattavas, you're recognized.
Nothing, sir.
Okay. Director Kemp?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple items. One is to confirm the board of directors attendance for August 7th, the Thursday special meeting. It was brought to my attention by the city clerk that we will need to have four to have a quorum for Thursday afternoon. So I'm circling around the board of directors here.
Well, I'm, I'm going to try. I have to see about arranging some things at, at the day job, but I'm going to try.
Okay. Okay.
I will not, I will not be able to make it.
Is there another time would be better for the ones that can't make it?
There's a lot of work that's put into the RSVP of this, so I have an alternative if, if we're not going to have a quorum. But is, are you available on Thursday afternoon?
As of, of, as of right now, yeah.
Okay. Director Martin and Settle? I know Director Settle's had a work meeting.
I could probably make it work.
Okay. Then I would say that we'll move forward. If, if it comes to the availability that somehow we don't have a quorum, the only thing that I know and prudent action would be, since the intent is to involve the audit committee, is allow the audit committee to have this meeting without the board of directors as well. And they can do that as well. But if, if it's indeed a special meeting, then we do require a quorum. And I wanted to make that just known to us as a board. The other one is, we had a review contract with SGR for employment search services, which was put on there by Director Christina Gattavas and Lee Kemp, placed on a future study session. And that was agreed in April 24, 25. And we, I think, reviewed that by our own actions of going with a different search firm. But this is still on our pending list as a board of directors. And so if, if there, I'd like to make a motion to remove this item, which we require four to remove it from our pending list, or we can leave it on there and we can talk about it when we talk about it.
What's the wishes of the board?
I'll second that removal.
Likewise, I'll third.
Okay.
We need, do we need another vote?
We do need four.
We need someone else to remove that item.
What was our, I mean, before I do this, what was our intent here? What's going, because SGR did the search form, right?
Correct.
They didn't do it correctly.
The, the time, through our own due diligence that we were working on, one action that we took was that we were going to review that contract. That would imply that we were going to continue to use them or reason with them to continue yet another search and then to come back around with how they're going to do this differently. And the board's direction was to go an entirely different direction. But if we want to leave it on there as far as some other point of review, then by all means, I'm happy to review it. But it is on the pending list, and it continues to sit there. And so we either need to move it into discussion or remove it from the pending list.
So, so is, is your expectation that SG, we no longer use SGR?
My, my current stance as one member of this board is I'm unimpressed.
And would we just use our own?
There are five agencies that were, that this past year that were qualified to serve, and they were one of five. So it still leaves a remaining.
SGR is one of five.
Leaves us remaining four. We can still, SGR has secured, Mr. Dingman can speak to this, SGR has secured some department heads for us and done some things. But if we're going to begin other future searches, I, I would not be nominating SGR.
I'll take it off.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Director Good?
Nothing.
Director Rego?
Yeah, I just, you know, wanted to, again, echo what's been said and extend a real, just genuine heartfelt thank you to everyone who worked on these leaks over the past 72-odd hours. And to the families and friends and the people, you know, who support those frontline workers. Thank you, you know, thank you for supporting them and, and giving them the confidence they needed to, you know, be away from home and, and work hard like that. I know that there's a lot of negative things that it's easy to read when, when difficult things come up like this. And I know that, you know, the elected officials and the decisions that get made, get made or sometimes don't get made are easy to pick on, and sometimes we deserve it. But I know that the people out there that are working in the ground, you know, with their hands to make sure clean water goes to your house and dirty water leaves, you know, those are folks that, they're just residents like all of us, and it's a job that they do, and they work really, really hard at it. And I know that there's some people that are negative, but I know that the vast, vast majority of people, 99.999%, are very, very grateful to the folks who do that work. And so I hope that their families and friends and loved ones know that it's not criticism for them, and it's nothing but thanks for those people that work hard to fix issues like this that crop up totally unexpected. So thank you, and thank you to their families and friends.
I have one more comment.
Okay. Thank you. Director George Gattavas?
How soon do y'all, how soon would y'all be ready to hire, hire this auditor? If we meet Thursday night, we decide on one, then how much longer do you, the people have been asking?
I think fairly quickly.
I'd make, I was planning to lead us to make a, a motion to have a special executive session the following Tuesday.
They're going to move on this quickly.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, we'll go to Mr. Dingman.
Thank you, Mayor. The board has, has expressed earlier a, an interest in, in participating in a strategic workshop. The staff has identified in the, a potential date of August the 22nd, it's a Friday, to have a strategic workshop for the purpose of strategic planning for the board of directors. We need four directors to formally call, have such a meeting. It would be proposed for 8:30 a.m. on Friday, August the 22nd, at 524 Garrison Avenue.
Where's that, where's that at?
That is the area agency on aging building. It would be on the seventh floor.
What's wrong with this building to have it?
Nothing is wrong with this building.
Well, why can't we have it here?
I second the motion for the alternate location.